We all say?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. If I could ask everyone just to silence their phones, please, and we will get our meeting started. And if we could rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. We have minutes to approve of our meeting, which was held Monday, May 3rd, here in the Tioga Room. Could I have a motion to accept those?
I'll make that motion, and I'll second it.
All right, and all in favor?
Aye.
There you go, John. And we had a few things to sign, but I believe the rest of the manifest will be ready for tomorrow. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, we will open our meeting with the discussion in regards to the exterior repairs to the mill. I know that we have two gentlemen here. If you'd like to come and sit right up here, front and center, so to speak. And you are, are you, you're with Target New England?
Yes.
Correct? Awesome. And your name, sir?
Jim Doherty.
All right.
I'm the owner of.
All right. I guess, I guess our main reason for asking you to come is just to clarify. Well, sorry. That's all right. Is just to clarify and maybe, you know, pick your brains a little bit, so we know in our mind exactly what's gonna happen. Obviously, we know that we have some major exterior things that have to be done. So if you can just give us a little overview, I think you know what we approved, and that was to go full vinyl. And I guess our reasoning for that, just to clarify, maintenance free, except as much as possible, obviously. That's huge for us because it's like anything else. We have many buildings, and we have many things to do to this building. And our feeling is, is if we try to put, do the right thing, and, and the best thing that we will not in two or three years have to be looking at this again, is what we're trying to accomplish. Because we'll be looking at other things at that point. All right, Mr. Doherty, go ahead.
Yeah, we understand your point. And we felt, above myself, that the using the AZAC and the paint, the super paint from Sherwin-Williams, would have gave you a product that would have lasted 10 years. But I think you're looking long-term, maybe twenty years or more. So, yeah, we're willing to put the vinyl siding on. And on any wood that's rotted, not in the fine shape, we have AZAC material that we were gonna use. That instead of the wood, we're gonna use the AZAC, which will last.
Okay, that was one of my concerns, was what was gonna be used underneath, and if any of it is comparable already.
Once we cut it out, the affected area, we'll use AZAC.
Okay.
That way, there's no chance of it rotting, or anything else, it's taken care of.
Okay, all right. And then I see you have samples or?
We have vinyl siding, right.
Okay.
One of the things about vinyl, things are getting really tough to buy nowadays. You buy it one, one week, and you go in the next week to get another piece, and they don't have it.
Right.
So, we have a couple of samples from different, different product lines, you know, different companies. So, this should handle whatever we have to do.
And these are good sturdy, I mean, that's my other issue, is I don't, yep, I don't want, I hate to see us use some cheap, you know, this vinyl and this vinyl, and I just don't want something that's going to be so, you know.
There's three different styles. You can see, see.
You guys probably know better than us.
On this, I can see the difference in the size here, and then you can see this here.
So which one of these are you recommending?
I think the certainty is the American property. It's probably the top. Yeah, top line.
Which one is the certainty? Okay, which one is that? This one here? Which would have been my choice. This one with a little bit of texture to it?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, all right.
It's a thicker plastic.
And I can, and that's exactly, I can see that already.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And I assume it's just white?
Yeah.
I mean, that's what it is. And are you gonna be able to get this, do you think?
We'll order it by the case, you know, enough to have.
All right. And not to be, but enough to have a little extra, just in case something happens.
What we'll do, we're gonna pull out an extra, and then if we have, we bring it back.
Back, but, but we would have the chance to be able to grab, all right, which is huge. I dealt with this before.
Yeah, you want the same color, same texture.
Right, and the same texture and the same. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that.
This one here.
And that is the price that we discussed at our last meeting?
Yep.
And I believe the, the walkway up on the top.
Oh, yeah.
The walkway, some of it is already vinyl, do you have said?
Yes.
I didn't get up and check that out, just, you know.
Well, it was a wrap. No. Patrick told us that it was. We haven't gone up yet.
You haven't gone up yet?
We didn't bring it, we didn't bring it all up there.
I went up.
All right.
I went up through the hatch.
Okay.
And some of the railings is already vinyl siding. It's wood, but it's been encapsulated with vinyl on them.
Is it encapsulated with vinyl or metal?
It was vinyl.
Okay.
We could take a lot of good metal on. Yeah. Because we're gonna do all, all the trim work. That will all be.
I think we do it all. I mean, I don't wanna leave it up, I don't wanna mismatch, if it's gonna be done, we're gonna do it.
As you said, we'll take the plastic off, and we'll put the metal on.
Yeah, yeah, because otherwise, it'll discolor, it won't, it will, I mean, not that anybody's gonna look from the ground up, but you'd be amazed.
I believe what they took was a two-by-four vinyl sleeve, and cut it.
Oh, and just, oh, I see, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a way to do it. But the dome itself?
Yeah.
Do you want a color? Because that's gonna be painted, that's not gonna be vinyl.
The, I would say just white, don't you?
No, I, I think you should put a color in it.
You think so?
Why not? This is the time to do it.
Is it?
The paint's gonna be the same, but, you know, the whole thing is white, why not have a dome of a nice color? I never, but you can think about it, you don't have to.
I don't have, we have to, I mean, I guess, I'd have to go out and look at it, to be honest with you. I think it's white now, though, right?
Yeah.
Isn't it white now?
It is white.
Well, the whiteness is white.
Everything is white. You're exactly right, there's no contrast up there. What you're saying is maybe it would be, it would look nice with the contrasting color on it. Yeah.
Which would cost copper and copper?
Huh?
Which would cost the copper and copper?
Copper right now is.
Some loss forever.
Right, but copper right now is, is.
Do the dome probably take grand? We don't discuss the copper, yeah.
Yeah, in fact, that's funny, because somebody just told me about copper last week.
Everything's up.
Yeah.
Plywood's gonna be a hundred dollars a sheet.
Yeah. Oh, I know two, three people who were gonna do projects this summer, and they've said, forget it. It's just, it's.
We can't do it anymore.
No.
It's when we get a job and then. We're doing an architect's house right now, and we did it in the past fall, and we came back, and we had to change the price on it, because the prices went up, so that's, it went up 20 percent, which is, you know, on a drum, that's $30,000, it's a lot of money.
I had a conversation with a gentleman a few days ago, the painting, okay? And they're, they're only, wherever he, a certain paint that he got, they're only holding the price for 48 hours, for a gallon of paint, and it went up $8 in a week. Price increased eight bucks in a week. And he said, so subsequently, I, it's hard for me to quote.
Yeah.
Because I don't know what's gonna happen to the product. So it is, it's, it's everything, it's everything.
Well, we're gonna stay with this, these numbers right now, we don't have any problem right now.
Okay. When do you think you're gonna start on this?
We'd like to start after Memorial Day.
Okay, all right.
And we talked to Patrick, he, he said we could have a couple of spaces up there, something after.
Trailer, yep. Yeah, we're not, it's not heavily, yeah, yeah.
And what's the guarantee on this? Could you explain that? I mean, how long?
Well, the guarantee is with the materials, you know, as far as later, we could give, take me a guarantee on anything falling apart, unless it's a hurricane or something.
Yeah, yeah, oh, no, worse things have happened.
But those, that, they, that comes with a lifetime guarantee. I'll have the company's warranty of guarantees.
Yeah, lifetime, limited lifetime warranty. Obviously, we don't have to worry about fading with white. I mean, it's, it's pretty, yeah.
Well, that's just like the AZAC, it's, it's that color all the way through.
It's all the way through. Yeah, awesome, all right.
That's one nice thing about AZAC.
Now, what is that board made of?
Plastic, it's.
Plastic, is that, is that recycled plastic, that it is?
Like milk bottles, the white ones.
Yeah?
Yeah. They dry them all up and then.
A lot of guys use them for decks now.
Yeah, well, it's, that's a little too expensive for decks, but siding is like, you know, when, on the edges, they use a lot.
Wait, yeah, well, you don't have to worry about painting if you have to cut it.
Once this is on, it's done.
It's done?
No painting, no anything.
Awesome, all right.
Because AZAC is the up-and-coming trim board houses, or what people build now is, you know, um, Harvard Town Hall was the same, that everything was AZAC.
Yeah.
And that was, we had to build specialty columns out in the front, and they had to be all AZAC, so we had to get the sheet goods and cut it and fit it and do our, our work to it, so.
Patrick, do you have any questions of them while you're here?
I have been in communication with them, so.
Okay, all right. And then you, and so you'll, guys will communicate as far as when you're moving in and, and whatever? And I assume any questions or whatever, you, Patrick will be here and on.
Do you need to sign a contract with them?
I would assume that we will need some sort of a contract.
Yeah, if you have a, just a general contract that you normally, yeah, if you could get that, just send it over to me, and we'll get that signed.
And you're over across the street?
Yeah, I sure am.
So, what's the timeframe?
You know, I painted that building.
You did?
She did.
That's the timeframe.
Oh, how long, how long do you think it's gonna take you to do it?
I, we'll look in between six and eight weeks.
Start to finish, so kind of through July?
Yeah.
June, July?
So if you. I was thinking about August, if we're gonna have.
Yeah, well, August, if, oh, that's true, it should be home, they should be done and out of here before Old Home Day, which is August 12th?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth?
Have to be, the nights are down here, then.
Oh, that's exactly right, you're right, that's exactly right. Good, awesome, all right. I don't have any other questions?
I'm good.
Any other questions?
No, I'm good.
We're good to go. Get us a contract, we get it signed, get your stuff ordered, and we're on a roll.
That's great.
All right, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for, yes, I see you. Thank you for bringing these in, so we can see, that's awesome. That will be a huge, huge.
You look for me, too, I'm trying to.
Well, I've been around a few years, that's for sure.
There you go, see.
That's what we are, I just did 66 a couple days ago.
We appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, Jean, then although library trustees, and that was something we voted on anyways, right?
You had placed a warrant article on the warrant for the March meeting, authorizing them to appoint up to three alternates, and they are asking that you confirm the appointment of Sam Ducharme as an alternate trustee, and that would be for a one-year term.
So moved.
Just need a motion.
So moved?
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now, I, I spent last evening and read this conflict of interest waiver.
Yes, really what that pertains to is DTC attorneys had done some work on behalf of the town for the planning board. So what they're doing is, we just have to sign a conflict of interest waiver, saying that there, there is no conflict of interest between the work they're going to be doing for us on the cable TV franchise agreement document versus anything that they have done in the past for the planning board. So, if you are okay with that, I will have you actually authorize me to sign that document on behalf of the town. And then I will just need a signature on the intermunicipal agreement, which is with the communities that we are working with on the new cable TV franchise, which would be.
Now, this is just giving, this, explain to me exactly what we're doing when we're signing this. We are.
We are committing that we're working with these other communities on our franchise agreement with Atlantic Broadband, and we're sharing the cost of the work that is necessary to complete that. Very similar to what we did 10 years ago, when we entered into the last franchise agreement. The only difference this time is, we have, the town of Tilton is not going to participate, for whatever reason, and I believe the town of Meredith has chosen not to. I did reach out to Comcast last week to see where they were in any potential.
That was gonna be my next question.
Yeah, any potential plans for broadening their, their space here in Belmont? And at this point, Brian Christiansen had indicated that they don't have any current plans to expand into Belmont, but that they never know, you know, I mean, it could come up at any given time, where they would come forward and potentially ask, so, who knows?
I thought some time ago, they called, and wanted to know if they had any interest.
They did, they did, that was about a year, gosh, it's been almost two years now.
Well, what happened also, they, because we signed a agreement with them, didn't we? Because they did, they, if they haven't, they are coming into Belmont.
And we actually didn't have to sign that, because it was with Lakemont directly, with what was Baricrest.
Right.
Right, they, as the owner of the development, they actually had to sign it, because the prime, they were coming in from Laconia side, not from Belmont.
They didn't realize that when they were coming into Baricrest, that part of it was in Belmont?
Right.
And part of it was in Laconia.
So Lakemont, their agreement is between themselves and Belmont.
Okay, all right, okay, I knew that there was something there.
Yep.
All right, okay. So do we need a motion, or just?
I need a motion for you to authorize me to sign the, the conflict of interest waiver.
Yeah, yeah.
And then you'll need a motion to enter into the intermunicipal agreement with the other communities that are participating in the program, which are Alton, Belmont, Deerfield, Franklin, Guilford, Gilmanton, Laconia, New Durham, and Northwood. And Ruth, you are the authorized signer on that document.
I'll make the motion.
All right.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you can just pass that over to Ruth for her signature? That would be great. Now, the chief is on tap next.
He is.
He is.
We had talked some time ago about a cops grant, because it's a cops grant, and whether or not we've been applied for it or not, this was probably a couple of years ago, because they ended up withdrawing money for that. Well, they recently opened it, so the availability is there. Now, the cops grant has fluctuated over different years. At one point, they paid 100% the first year, 50% the second year, third year, you can pick them up. Cops grant now is 75% for three years. So, we would, we would have to afford 25% of the costs we're in for an officer if we hired one with a cops grant, and that would be for a three-year, three-year stint. After the three years, it's obviously your option of whether you want to retain the, the position or you don't. But it would be a three-year hire if we did this.
I read through this last night, I did my homework. I did. And obviously, it has to be a total new hire. It can't, even if you have a vacancy, it still has to be a new hire, okay? And, and you can't share that money, like you couldn't, it's a total position in itself. It can't be intermingled with anything that we already have approved. So my question to you is, is that where we have to pick up 25%, that's not in your budget if you got this grant? When is this grant going to be, if you got this grant?
It would be for a month, before we would know whether we would, we would get it.
Okay.
It's a very competitive grant.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a lot of people applying for this money. We have numbers that we can throw into the grant that are gonna show the busyness and everything else.
Yeah, of course.
So does everyone else.
Everyone else, I understand.
So it's very competitive, it's, it's by no means a sure thing. One area that we were looking at potentially for that, for that grant to be used in is for school resource officers.
I wondered that.
Because we are gonna lose.
Sure.
We're gonna lose our own one. At some point, Richie's gonna retire, completely.
And so what that tells me is, because we do receive, if I remember correctly, a certain amount of money from the school that we receive back for that resource officer, which obviously would cover that difference, so to speak.
I think that would help. But in looking at it, and my feelings were, we're to look at it for the SRO position.
Yeah.
As opposed to a patrol position, because it's, it's definitely needed, even though there's, there's a push from certain factions in the country to dissolve the school resource officer.
Well, didn't, I just saw something, was it Lebanon or something? One of the other, I, there was something on Channel 9 News about that, that they were looking at abolishing the resource, but they voted against it right now, at least for the year.
Right.
Okay.
Our issue is, our resource officer is very busy. Should we lose the resource officer position, we're gonna need a patrol position just to cover that.
The school?
It is a weekly time. That person also prosecutes juvenile cases in court. It's nothing that our current prosecutor can handle with the case load that he's currently feeling from us. So, yeah, it would be a unique person that we'd have to hire, it wouldn't be somebody that we would hire and then have to send to an academy. These would have to be somebody that's, that's established and has prosecution capabilities.
And obviously, having some close contact through my grandson with some of the things that are going on in the schools, I don't see how they can't have a resource officer. I, I don't.
I should be feeling too, I really should have too, and I, I just don't have it. I can't, I can't pick anyone from patrol right now, which is very.
That will bring up another subject after this one. I personally am in favor of at least trying to get the grant, all right? It doesn't cost us anything to get the grant?
No, that's what I need to know, is whether I can go ahead and file the papers, because it's, it's a process for us to get the grant put together and to get it in, and then it's just a matter of waiting to see what happens, so.
Do we need a grant writer? Do we need a grant writer to do this? Should we have?
I, I actually think that Evan can pull this one off.
Yeah.
I believe Evan can pull this one off. We do have option to a grant writer.
I see, I see a hand going up, yes?
We already have, we already contracted one for the fire department, so they won't want to lose it. Awesome. This is the same one that we were thinking on doing? I believe so, yeah.
I sent, I sent Nancy's going to grant writing school along with Evan, so they've gotten some, they have some backgrounds. So if we end up with a grant writer to help us.
That just gives them, it gives them more of a, you know, pick their brain, so to speak.
It helps them a lot in getting the materials that are needed to put with the grant, to submit the grant.
On time.
On time.
Yeah.
And that's the most important thing, because if it's late, it's out.
It's absolutely.
There's no convenience, it's out.
Did we, not to change, did we ever hear on that, on the, not yet, okay, I, that just brought, that just.
But we haven't, and if they want to write it, then the grant writer can go through it and help them change it and adapt it, because that would all, the verb is just the hardest part.
It's the hardest part, right.
Right, okay, awesome, no, I mean, whatever, you know.
I just need the authorization to do it, and we'll, we'll jump into it, so.
I'll make the motion to do that.
Try to get it going.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So.
Worst thing would be worse later on down the road, if we can't use it.
Well, it's the same as the fire program.
Right, exactly.
That's all.
Exactly.
But biggest thing is to get there.
And you're going, you're saying for non-public, correct? Okay, because I have another question that I want to hit you with.
No, you go right ahead.
I'll do that non-public.
Shout out for you guys.
Good, all right, okay. Okay, any other new business?
Yes, so, oh, I'm sorry, no. It's actually under old business.
Okay, she was ready, okay.
Was ready.
Old business?
Yes, the American Rescue Plan. They've finally released the guidance as for what the funds can be used for. And we primarily fall under improvements to water and sewer infrastructure. I had looked into the possibility of broadband, which my goal was to connect all of the buildings in the downtown area, but unfortunately, what it also needs to do is it needs to be available and service the public as well. So the cost for those type of expansions is, is fairly significant. Just to do our buildings alone, Ryan Irving with Fiber Next had set about between 50 and 70,000 to connect all of our buildings, starting with the fire department, town hall, library, mill.
But what you're saying is, they, we have to.
These funds would not, yeah.
Always have to redefine.
These have to be, exactly, these have to be, they have to broaden the, the availability of broadband to everyone in a specific area versus just in the downtown. The water and sewer, potentially, the project that I think would be the most beneficial would be the repairs and so forth to well number one, which had gotten us, we had gotten an estimate 450,000 to do that. The available funding that we're going to be getting is 725,973 dollars is what's being estimated. We'll get it in two payments, the first one to come in 2021, and the second one to come a year later. So we'll, we'll be, you know, they'll be a little shy of the funds.
So if we, okay, now, now we gotta, all right, if we decide to do the well, which I think is huge, I think that's huge. 362,000 is what we would get the first year.
Right, right.
Are we, do we have enough to make up the difference, to carry it? If it comes out at 400,000, we have the funds to be able to.
We do have funds in our, in our capital reserve fund. We can't put those funds back into the capital reserve fund. So we'll have to, you know, we'll have to do some creative work on that.
All right.
What they're also suggesting is that we submit an application to the SRF program, which is through New Hampshire DES as a possible means for some additional funding. It's not likely that we would start this project until probably.
Closer to the second year.
Closer to 2022. So we may already have the funds available for the, the full cost of the project at that point.
So that's 400,000. So now we got 325,000.
Right. So, as I read it, they have to be projects that would qualify under the Environmental Protection Agency's Clean Water Act and Drinking Water Acts. So your routine-type maintenance would not be something that would be considered. The other thing that I was looking at was Senator Shaheen has sent out an application form for what's called congressional direct spending. It's basically, you can submit a program to her office, which she then submits to the federal government for potentially funding an earmark, basically, in the, in the federal government's budget. So what I was looking at was the potential of submitting the iron and manganese treatment facility to her office for consideration under that as well. So there are a number, when these funds come in, we will want to separate them from any general fund monies that we have, because in the event that we don't use them all, or have a purpose to use them all, I mean, you can use them for other COVID-related things, you know, enhanced pay and things like that, but at this point in time, we're, we're really, we've moved away from that. We've received reimbursement under both the, for police and fire, for any, you know, hours that they were participating in. We've got FEMA monies that are coming back to us for those related costs as well, so I, I don't. So I, I don't see any of those as potential options. The other option would be to improve, um, the heating and ventilation, the remainder of the heating and ventilation in this building that was not upgraded with CARES Act money when we did the fourth floor and Donna's office. So that's another potential use for those funds.
Okay.
So.
Um, my other question would be, um, do these funds, um, because I know we've had some spots where we've had some water main breaks. Down around, I think it's down around church. There's been what, two or three down that way, correct? Is that the old iron pipe?
Four.
Four, is that the old iron pipe?
It's cast, it's cast.
It's cast iron. So, would those funds, um, um, I mean, granted, I guess we'd have to have it engineered. Or do we run it right? Okay, that, I'm, yeah, I mean.
I guess my question is, I mean.
It's somebody to look at, see over there, because what you have to do, you have to, you're already reroute the water, you have to put people on temporary water.
Oh, of course.
Temporary line.
Yep, yep, you gotta run that, I know.
It's pretty much, it's quite a ball.
I understand.
It's not necessarily like, I mean, a lot of the pipe in town is the same age as that pipe, but it's, it's all about what it's embedded.
Yeah, I suppose.
Because, I mean, downtown, we've got, you know, really good, we've got a good sand base to the town, we're very, very fortunate. But when you get into a situation like, well, you know where the old church is.
Yep.
And that's just.
Clay.
It's just hard pan, it's rock, it's just that.
Down near the ri- it's down near that.
Down the river, that stretch is just really, and you know, years ago when they installed pipe, they didn't, you know, now it's required that you do a six-inch bed of sand.
Yeah.
You put six to twelve inches of sand around the pipe.
Back then, they just, they'd fill with whatever, rocks, they didn't care.
They dug it, and they didn't have, they didn't have the access to the material.
Yep.
Like you do today, so.
But you don't think it would, would cover?
Well, they speak to building or upgrading facilities and transmission, distribution, and storage systems, including the replacement of bad-led service lines. So there is, you know, the possibility of, of utilizing it for that as well.
Well, I guess my question is, is that, you know, i- if, if you get the monies, if we get, if we use the monies for the, the well, all right? And then you've got this other monies, um, and we don't get anything, maybe through Jean Shaheen's office for whatever, at least it would be, you know, if Plan A doesn't work, you go to Plan B, but you'd be prepared for Plan B, because is there a timeframe to use this money?
Before the end of December twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so we've got a little, we do have some time then.
Yep.
All right, okay.
Yep.
And, I was telling Jean about, you know, I gave her like a list of, we have like a dozen or so key areas that we could do like G A replacements. So we could, even though the pipe is old, we could isolate the system a little.
That would be, yeah, okay, all right.
So.
All right, there's, there's many different, um.
It is, but, you know, we, we need, we, we need some help. When you, when you, when you have to do that G A replacement, you gotta, because you have to figure out how are you gonna do, how are you gonna, you know, supply people?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, how are you gonna handle fire protection?
Yep.
Um, and stuff like that, so it's.
Yep, okay, all right. So those are things that we need to work on.
Yep.
But I think that well, I think that's huge, yeah.
Because like I said, our problem isn't supply.
Right.
The, the deficiency of that well.
Yep.
And I think that would, that would secure our supply for the future.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's a good chance to get it taken care of, because it always kind of pops up. So we know it's, we know we have a problem, so this would be a good way, in my mind, to get it taken care of, without costing the taxpayers, well, somewhere.
Right, and his.
Somewhere we're paying for all this.
His estimated cost was from a proposal in September.
Yeah.
I would want him to do a more recent one, depending, you know, that could very well be that costs have gone up exactly.
Who knows when he could even do it?
Yeah.
So I think that's huge. And this is the same gentleman that's been working on this well forever and ever.
Barry Miller.
Yep, yep. That would be, what do you think, guys?
I agree with you.
All right, yeah. I mean, that would, I mean, that would be a, a issue that's kind of stuck up here, hanging over our heads, but it would, it's federal funds and take advantage of it.
For me, it takes the burden off the everyday taxpayer and not just the water user.
Right, that's exactly right.
The water user can't afford to pay it.
Right. And the taxpayers will vote to do, to do it.
And they're gonna say no, and we're gonna end up.
Yep.
I don't think the tank painting would qualify as.
Now, that's probably maintenance, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that's gonna be, no, that's, that's, that's in the foreseeable future, and that's gonna be a significant cost.
But we gotta do it, we can't lose that tank. I mean, that's huge.
It's all, everything's about maintenance, guys.
Yep.
Pay me now, or pay me later.
You're exactly right. I know what those tanks cost.
Yeah, and that's to, to go through that tank, paint it, and to do it properly, and then.
Yeah.
You know, you're gonna pay, you know, they're, they're painting the insides of these tanks now. Believe it or not, and it's, we've got products now that are holding up extremely well, but, you know, you're gonna have to get a bladder, and it's gonna be to supply it down, and it's, we're gonna call one grand.
Yeah. So are we putting monies in a capital fund to foresee?
Well, you've been putting money into capital reserve for the water system for the past two years, so.
That's what I thought.
We'll continue to, to save for that and continue to plan in twenty twenty-two for another, um, requested, yeah.
All right, awesome, all right. And obviously, that's something to even keep watching, because if the monies come through or the, or the availability, we get it done, who knows if we can get it done sooner? Again, it's all trying to find the people to do it.
And one of the things that, um, has been key in all of the, um, webinars that have been going on for the past ten days, um, relate to making certain that you not only look to use the monies that are coming to you as your percentage of the allotment being given to the state, but look at all of the other federal programs that may potentially come out under the latest bill that, you know, is still working its way through the government.
Yeah.
So to make sure you take advantage of any use you possibly can, so.
Hey, we might as well. We're all gonna have to pay it back, we might as well take advantage of it. That's for sure. Okay, um.
So, we'll move forward with, um, getting everything submitted when, once we know this. So what's gonna happen with the New Hampshire monies, um, the monies will go to the state, and then the state will be dispersing them to the cap, the, the town and the county. The county's going to be getting, um, actually, close to eleven million, I believe it is. Um, I know our, one of our representatives, Mr. Trotter, had reached out last week and, you know, wanted to make sure that we were aware that the county was going to be getting funding as well, and that they were looking for possible, um, uh, projects that would impact a lot, much larger base, not just specifically the, the, you know, county facility itself.
Yeah, oh, interesting.
So, yeah.
So. Can't get so much money, I don't know what to do with that.
I know, I know.
Okay, um, Lakes Region Community Developers?
Yes, so, um, Sal Hubbard, Stephen Hubbard, had reached out to me, and she had asked if the Board of Selectmen would be willing to, again, support a grant application on the behalf of Lakes Region Community Developers to the C D B G program for five hundred thousand dollars for additional work to be done on the Gale School. We don't currently have any projects that we're looking to submit to C D B G, um, so what they're looking for is your willingness to support their grant application. If you are willing to do so, we would need to hold a public hearing in that regard at the end of June, um, and they would then put together the application. And what that does is basically, again, we're the flow-through. Very similar to what we did for Westview Meadows, the money just flows through the town. We sign the, the pay applications and issue the checks.
So, that doesn't prevent if something comes up that we?
If something were to come up next year, we certainly could make application and apply. But as of right now, we don't have any projects that we're looking to make application for to the program. If we did, we would then want to support our project versus theirs.
Um, now, this five hundred thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Um, do they have a plan for that building?
Again, they would come in and let you know what their intent was if you are willing to consider, um, supporting the application. She didn't give me any details as to what they plan to spend this particular five hundred on, but, um, they did utilize the planning grant for, um, the work that they initially started, at least, in looking at the building and what it could potentially be used for and so forth. I haven't seen a report, um, from that planning grant yet, they've not submitted that, but they do need to do a progress hearing for that with the Board of Selectmen, and that should be coming up as well towards the end of June. So it would be at the same time, they would tell you what has been done, what they did find in the plan, and then potentially what they're looking to do.
So at this point, Lakes Region Community Developers own that building?
Uh, no. They're just the agency that is, um, working with the Gale School Committee to, um.
Oh, I thought once it was moved that they were gonna.
They are once it's completed.
It was described, at least my understanding was it was gonna be a daycare.
Yep, that's one of the.
Facility, and it would be a tax-paying entity to the town of Belmont when it was completed. So my, I would, I would support this on the fact that I don't wanna take anything away from the town.
No.
But, we got it set in there now, so we go, we're in for a dime, we might as well be in for a dollar. We've gotta, if they can go out and get a grant for this, and this seems like the government can't give away enough money right now, we gotta try to help.
Okay. So they would be looking to schedule a public hearing at the end of June. Um, C D B G, new requirements are that you hold your public hearings during a timeframe when the public could be more readily available to, to participate in the public hearing. So Donna Lane had suggested that if you were going to agree to be willing to do this, that you'd be looking at a time about three o'clock in the afternoon in lieu of a ten A M. meeting. So what I'd be looking at is June twenty-first at three P M., um, for your meeting instead of the, um, ten A M. meeting.
So do we just hold the, are we just holding a special meeting for this?
No, you would just hold your public, that's your regular meeting day, you would just do it all at one time. So June twenty-first, it's a Monday at three P M.
Okay.
We'll let them know that.
No, well, it's not Thursday or Friday, it ain't.
Sunny, is that gonna interrupt your?
Well, it's too far off, we need to really.
Can't interrupt my chores, no, it's all right, okay, all right.
Okay.
Um. Okay, update on D H H S?
Yes, um, so as you know, um, both our police and fire departments have been working closely with the Department of Health and Human Services, um, on the COVID vaccine programs. And we had billed them for February and March, a total of about sixty-three thousand dollars as we were seeking for reimbursement. We have received that. We received, um, fifteen thousand five hundred and thirty on May fourth, and we received another forty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-nine last week. Um, for the month of April, we have charged out forty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars, so we would be expecting that as well.
And that's still gonna go on, because they say, they're saying that what the state?
Oh, the, that's, the current schedule continues at the end of the month. In June, the cha- uh, the schedule will change to less hours, and in July, the operation is over.
Is it?
July first, the, you know, the military has gotten out of the vaccine business and they're back in the way, sending it off to privates.
So what hap- uh, sent off to privates, so.
They're going to pharmacy.
I found the seed.
Offices, offices, something like that.
Yeah, yeah, interesting, all right, good.
And the only other, um, thing I have for you today is your ongoing, um, agreement with Lakes Region Public Access Television. It's up for renewal for the July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, um, based on our total number of subscribers, um, which we have thirteen hundred and seventy-five that are currently in Belmont that subscribe to video only with, um, Atlantic Broadband, so this doesn't include those that are viewing, um, the, um, program, programming over the internet, strictly video, um, programming. Um, so the total cost for this year is nine thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars, which you pay out of your franchise fees, so that we do not, um, we don't budget or operate for that. So Ruth, this just needs your signature if you're willing to hold on with that for the year.
Do you, you wanna ask them about the Sunset Drive?
Um, you certainly can, if that's, if you would like to, to do that, absolutely.
Should I do that now?
Um, if they are ready to do that, you certainly can.
Almost at three o'clock.
I'll just, okay. So the gentleman who was, Chris Bouchard is, um, constructing a house at sixty-nine Sunset Drive, which is located on the corner of Sunset and Pond, and Pond is a dirt road. He is, he'd like to put the driveway, he's gonna put the driveway in on Pond. So between the asphalt on Sunset and where his driveway is going to be, it's about fifty-two feet. He would like, he's, he would like at his expense to be able to pave that section, and so it ties in the driveway with the asphalt to Sunset Drive. I, go ahead.
So, the option, um, that would be in our best interest would be for us to do the work and then to get him to pay us.
Yeah.
Um, if you allow him to go forward with it, our attorney does not recommend that. She feels that that, if you allow him to hire a paver and to have it paved, paved, her comment was, um, the town is going to be liable for the road, so if he paves it poorly and someone is later injured, the town will be on the hook. I de- definitely recommend saying no to this, um, but she doesn't have a problem with the town having it paved when we have a paver doing our work and charging him for it and making him reimburse us. But she's not in favor of us allowing him to do the work.
I just, my only thought is, I don't know how economical it's gonna be for our paving contract to kinda go down there and pave, you know, two and a half inches of binder and.
Well, you better find that out.
Well, no, it'll, it'll just be what it is, he'll either have to pay it or he won't have it done.
Well, I, I would think, I would think if you're planning to do some paving work this year.
Yep.
That you could go to your contractor and say, look, see this, I know it's fifty-two feet.
Yeah.
How much is that gonna be to do this correctly, so we can then t- tell this gentleman how much it's gonna be, give or take a thousand bucks, we'll say, I mean, I got no idea how much to put in this road.
Yeah, I can, I can give an idea, but I just, I just wanted to know if some of you guys wanna let them do it or not, that's.
Oh, I, I think, I, I don't, I don't argue with, the guy wants to do it.
No, it's just.
And I understand what the lawyer's saying.
Who doesn't, is the, the, the issue.
Let's do it our way, and if he wants to play, we'll play. That's my.
Now, who would be responsible for paying the contractor? Him directly?
No, we would pay the contractor and he would reimburse the town.
Who would reimburse the town?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if the contractor gives us four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
But, take it five thousand. He'll know it's five thousand, he'll sign an agreement that he's gonna pay this five thousand upon the billing from the town, then we'd see that it gets, you'd see that it gets that. But there would be an agreement between this man and the town, that he agrees and knows what it's gonna be, as well as the agreement you would add with the contractor.
Now, do we, do we plow that piece of road? Okay.
We do anyway.
All right, okay, I was just asking. All right.
Okay, I'll let him know that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Before you go, how about that, uh, Soul Village, how are we making out with that?
Oh, um, T N D Services, locating services is finishing up locating all the utilities tomorrow. I talked to Dan Roche from Underwood this morning, he went up this weekend, uh, took a few pictures, but tomorrow when they're done, he's gonna send, um, one of his men up with, uh, a GPS locating device, and they're gonna map out all the, all the utilities in the underground that, that this guy is locating. Um, if you got enough, you guys have driven up there, I don't think it's, I don't think it will be as bad as.
As we anticipated, yes.
Yeah, you should, you know, when you see the flags and you see the marking, it just gives you a better insight of what's really going on. And it's kind of like, believe it or not, there is kind of an epic of the madness. So, I mean, that's the best way.
I, I just, I couldn't understand when you saw a pipe under a driveway with a power cord going through it, a drainage pipe.
No, I know.
I mean.
And, and like I said, he's gonna, he's doing the best he can to give us some depth on the cross-sections, on the cross-pipes.
Yep.
Um, like I said, I told Dan, I said, I said, I'd really like to get someone up there, because I've kind of been on, I'd really like someone to get up there as soon as possible, because they have flags out there.
They have flags, yeah.
These flags aren't gonna, people aren't gonna be going that long, and people are gonna be there with these flags, and, you know, I mean, not that it's a huge expense, I think it was a great idea. I think, you talk about bank for the block, I think.
Oh, well, we had no choice, just knowing the whole circumstance. Oh, well, we had no choice, just knowing the whole circumstance. It's, what, what we're doing is covering ourselves.
It'd be a lot more expensive than that.
Right, that's exactly right.
So, I just, um, so, yeah, I'm working on that.
And then they're gonna locate all that on plans, and then when we put it out to.
That's right.
Did, the contractor's gonna see what he's dealing with.
Right.
And so if he happens to fray from that plan and digs something up, it's at his expense, not at ours. That's, yeah.
Yeah.
We're just, we're covering ourselves.
Yeah, and you can't, I mean, there's no guarantee that you're gonna locate one hundred percent.
Everything, yeah, I understand.
Every television line, or every.
Right.
You know, utility line, or power line, or, it's just no, there's no guarantee, but it's gonna be a good, um.
I don't have an, I don't have an issue digging up a cable line, it's when you dig up an electric line. We don't need anybody getting electrocuted to know.
I mean, I think, I'll, and I'll be honest with you guys, I think this week was supposed, actually, today and tomorrow, we're supposed to get a PDF on the final plans.
Yep.
And I think Dan sent them in the mail on Friday, so I should be, I should be receiving the final drawings on Plummer Hill. So we're gonna s- see if we can get that shipped out a bit here, sooner than later.
Yep.
But just to let you guys know, if you are considering doing anything with that, this is the year.
Oh, I, I totally agree, I can't believe the number of contractors who aren't full.
We do have hitters that are gonna be bidding.
We do, yes.
On Plummer Hill, from what I understand, and they're, they're calling me, and they're like, what's going on, because they wanna bid this.
Yep.
People that would normally not be.
And they probably, in all honesty, will probably get it done before winter.
Yeah, well, I, oh, I think so, definitely.
Yes.
I think if you wanted, if you wanted to, if, if you wanted to pull a plan together for Soul Village, and this is all done, I mean, I don't think, it would, it would dare to get some prices. Because I think this is, this is the year, I really do. I mean, you got, you've got guys like River Brothers and Oddly and stuff like that, and the, the Trump and the bits do these jobs for between five hundred thousand dollars and a million five, that they wouldn't even look at.
No.
Three years ago.
No.
So, I think we really, you know, we go through Plummer Hill, like we said, we put the, we put it all in, we put two and a half inches of binder on it, leave it, and finish it out next year. I tell you, I think, I think, I think this is the year to do it, I really do.
Well, as soon as, as far as I'm concerned.
You're gonna do half of Soul Village, phase it. Do half, do the other half next year, just let's, we gotta get it static, I'll tell you what, I drove through that the other day, it's just not getting any better.
Okay. As far as I'm concerned, as soon as the plans are ready for Plummer Hill, put them out to bid.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll, they'll put them out, they put them out to the, the available agencies and so forth, that.
Well, like I said, as soon as I get the plans, that's, they're on my, that's what I'm gonna be working on. I might actually call Rick and see if he wants to look at it, but it's kind of, it's kind of hard, it's not, and I don't have any guidance with it.
No, I'm sure he'd love to.
Um, but we made some real, him and I, I think him and I came up with some really good, really good changes, and I think it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be good, so.
Nope, I'm sure he'd be more than willing to.
Yep, yeah.
Awesome. Okay.
Thanks. Mr. Rick, really, I want to throw something to say, Patrick's awesome, that guy is, that guy's on it all the time, and next week we'll be putting the ropes out at the beach, so.
We appreciate your help with that as well.
I'm, I can't say enough about him, he's a great, he's a great guy.
We currently are using the side entrance to Town Hall. We have been, of course, since we reopened to the public. Do you have any, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of, um, talk and confusion over the, the change in the C D C's guidelines regarding masks and social distancing. Yes, and I know the governor and, um, Dr. Chan were certainly taken by surprise last Thursday when they were in the, you know, on their news conference about it and so forth. Um, do you want me, I guess I'm looking for your guidance on reopening the front door, having people start to come through and into Town Hall and Normal Hall.
Are you still asking them to wear masks?
We are currently, um, we've not had anyone, um, you know, complain, but it's only been two days since we've been open, since the guidelines changed. So I guess the question is, at what point do we wanna?
I would agree, I think, I think as long as you keep a mask on, you know, because you guys can acquire it still in those buildings.
Yeah.
Have your kind of normal operation, sort of.
Instead of the, the side door, I was thinking about, you know.
I don't have a problem with that, as long as people are wearing masks, because you just don't know.
Right.
You don't know.
Alright, then I, I think what I'll do is I'll look to get, when Patrick has some time potentially this week, we'll get some of the signage down, but we'll leave up signage that says, you know, masks are, you know, required. If we get any arguments, we'll just have to deal with that at the time, so.
I think most people, I, I'm sure there's always someone, but, um, I think most people have been pretty good about wearing their masks, I guess. It's always gonna be one of them.
Although if you, but that's, that's worked for them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, most all your stores are requiring masks still anyway, so that is not gonna change anything with that, I don't think.
I've not seen, it's interesting, um, neither Primex or the Municipal Association really have come out with anything in the past two days, two or three days since, um, the guidance was changed. I, I would expect, maybe they may come out with something this week, but I think it'll probably depend on where the governor's office, you know, where he falls on that, so.
And if you leave, you know, like, yeah, if you like now, we have a mask or vaccination, but I mean, pan sent it out there, so. You can't say it forever, I don't know, I just take one.
I just, it would just be to get that door open and have the flow and just, you know, um, have people moving through, I think would be, so.
I have just one question, the, I know that the issue on Johnson Street is in court, correct?
Well, it's, it's in the legal's hands.
Okay, because I had a call from a neighbor that I haven't been able to reach back, and, um, when I re- huh? Yes, and it was, please call me immediately, which probably tells me that there must have been something going on, or whatever.
Going on.
Okay.
I think he's adding more handles to the.
Oh, you, you do, so you're aware of that, alright, so that way, if I do reach him.
I've communicated to, to, uh, two of our representatives in Mitchell Group, and, um, and as far as I know, they're working on it.
Okay.
I think it'd be one of those, with just getting a hearing.
Yeah, it's not so much, it's not so much our legal, it's just trying to get a hearing.
And I told him it's done, it's out of my hands, it's in, it's in, you know, the legal's hands.
Okay.
And I told him, it's a few months.
Yeah.
Many months before we even hear anything.
Okay, alright.
And we're not, we're doing the same with Fire Department, we've, we're taking them to court on other incidents, too, so.
Oh, really?
Legal party and stuff like that, so we've been working on that.
Oh, on the same property?
Yeah.
Same property.
Oh, really, oh, okay, so, so it's not only, it's both, it's, okay, alright.
It's all us working right now.
Okay, so that's okay, at least if I know, because he, you know, I'll.
He's just using his, uh, well, I'd say excuse, but, uh, he's going before court.
Well.
Months after months after months.
Yeah.
He says that.
Oh, you mean this guy that's?
He's bringing stuff in.
Oh, really, oh, really, oh, alright, so it must be this, there was either, there must have been something going on.
Yeah.
This was Saturday, maybe?
Yep. And the same, same, definitely, we've been working on C V Road this, ninety-three area.
Yeah.
Yep. You have the state involved in that now, too, so.
Okay.
And I have.
Working on it.
Yeah.
Alright.
And C V Road is, uh, I'm actually going to tomorrow to pick up the paperwork drawn, for, because I think Phil is.
I'll get rid of the iron.
And the, yeah, get some of those, uh, vehicles out of there.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of them, not all, just some.
Yeah.
So it's in the makings, but, you know.
It just, I just wanted to make sure, so that.
To know that you're all working on it, I mean, it really, it really is, I mean, you, you know, when people ask you these things, and you.
Well, and that's why I'm asking, because I didn't talk with him, and, and.
We're all doing our part, it's just now it's on the stand, it's, I don't wanna say a standstill, but it's the court.
It's the courts.
Going through the process.
Alright.
Okay, we said they go, kind of, one and two more.
Yeah, I know, well, I know that, yeah, I know, but at least, um, at least if I, because I did leave him a message, and so if he calls me, I at least can say that I've discussed it, and then I'll ta- I'll just say to him, all, all three entities are involved with it, we're just waiting for the court date, basically. Alright, hearing date, alright.
And Mr. Griffiths did reach out to Laura on Friday, um, wondering where the document was. I said, well, Laura, I've sent it to him twice, I said I will resend it, and I did resend it to him with a copy to her. Um, so I, and I did express to him in my email that he needs to get back to me and let me know if he's going forward with it, because if he isn't, we're gonna move forward with the other instance, so, yeah, so we are on top of that one as well.
But we don't know who the buyer is.
We, no, um, but we will know, um, when he signs the agreement, yeah.
Alright.
Yep.
Okay, we're just waiting for the agreement.
Yes.
Okay, alright, so, alright, anything else in old business?
Uh, no.
Alright, then I guess we need to move into non-public.
Yes, you have Chief Lewandowski, um, we'll have him go first, and then I'll call Cynthia to come over for, um, her non-public, so let me just get the.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Let me just get the cameras off.
Yep. So this is non-public ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two.
Little letter C.
Little letter C, roll call?
Sure they got it.
Ruth Mooney?
On bike.